I'd like to call to order the regular monthly board meeting of the Board of Education of Wausau School District. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for coming. I have a short statement to read. The response will in many cases be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on a matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such, and that will only occur after we have reached consensus. The first item on the agenda is the National School Lunch Week proclamation, and so I will read that verbatim. Whereas, the National School Lunch Program plays an important role in helping to ensure that every child in the nation is ready to learn because a hungry or undernourished child is less likely to be an eager and attentive student. And whereas, the National School Lunch Program has a demonstrated commitment to our children's health and well-being, serving nutritious meals that are balanced for vitamins and calories which supports healthy eating patterns. And whereas, in Wisconsin, over 2,400 public and private schools participate in the National School Lunch Program and serve 470,000 lunches each school day, directly supporting Wisconsin's Every Child a Graduate agenda. And whereas, the success of this effort is due largely to resourceful and creative local food service administrators, managers, and staff working in cooperation with parents, teachers, community groups, government personnel, and students. Therefore, be it resolved that October 15th through 19th, 2018 be proclaimed as National School Lunch Week, a time to celebrate the importance of a program that helps keep students nourished so they can learn. So thank you very much for all of our school nutrition specialists working for the district.
And so with next week being School Lunch Week, this week is actually School Board Recognition Week, so there were some cookies. Hopefully everybody got some to have a little celebration, a little thank you. But there's also a proclamation from the Office of the Governor for School Board Week, so I will read this. Whereas, school boards are locally elected to serve their communities with the mission of preparing all students for success in higher education, careers, and responsible citizenship. And whereas, school boards are empowered by the state legislature with the responsibility to educate every student in the public school system of Wisconsin. And whereas, school boards oversee a public education system that provides a range of educational services to support their students' individual needs. And whereas, school boards work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to make the educational vision for our students a reality. And whereas, school boards play a critical role in improving student achievement in their districts and fostering economic development in their communities. And whereas, school boards are important advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. Now therefore, I Scott Walker, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim October 7th through the 13th, 2018 as School Board Week throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all of our citizens. So thank you, school board members, for your work.
Well, despite what I said earlier, I will say, I think I can say on the part of the board, thank you very much. The only reason we can do any of this work is because of all the work that you all have already done. So thank you for your efforts. All right, the next item on the agenda is Spotlight on Education, the Gifted and Talented Program. Tammy Steckbauer, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As I move into my sixth year in serving in this role, one thing has been constant over these years, and that is the overwhelming support demonstrated in this district for gifted education. And that really begins with you at the top, our school board. Each year, we go to our state conference in the Dells, and there are breakout sectionals designed to help coordinators like me get school boards like you onboard with gifted education. And on behalf of all the students and families and staff in our district, we've never had to attend those sectionals thanks to your support. So thank you to our school board. Support trickles down to the administrative level, and that is true at the district level here at Longfellow, as well as at the building level, elementary, middle, and high school. I want to say thank you to our administrative team here in the district. Again, the support that they demonstrate make all of the work that we bring forward in our department possible. The classroom teacher. I am overwhelmed by the wonderful classroom teachers we have in this school district, 700-plus strong, who do an amazing job, who work so hard every day. And we've talked about heavy plates. They've got an awful lot on their plates. And while we need to move forward and we need to keep growing and pushing, we also need to pause and stop and say thank you for the work that you're doing. Because sometimes it can feel like it's never enough, we're never doing enough. And that's absolutely not true. So I want to make sure that you hear me say very clearly, all the classroom teachers, elementary, middle, and high school teachers, they're on the front lines, they're the folks doing the hard work, and really, they are the biggest reason why we're able to accomplish all that we have in this district. So I want to say thank you to the classroom teachers. You'd expect our gifted and talented department to be supportive of gifted education, and they are. We have a wonderful, small department, but a wonderful, hard-working department. Personally, I'm humbled to be able to work with these individuals. They work tirelessly. Like the classroom teacher, our GT teachers, they're spread too thin, but they roll up their sleeves and do everything possible to support our students, our parents, classroom teachers, their building principals, some of whom serve for building principals, me as the coordinator and you as the school board. And like the classroom teachers, I want to say thank you. We have a couple of them in the audience here tonight. They do an amazing job. Lastly, our students and our families. We're very fortunate to have such great students in this district who come to school ready to learn, wanting to learn, asking for more. And their parents, who support education, learning in general, our schools and our Wausau School District. So thank you on behalf of the department to all of our students and our families. Last year when we were at our conference, it was sort of confirmed that we're really kind of doing a lot of great things in the Wausau School District. We have many great structures already in place, and we have an awful lot to be proud of. This conference is set up based on needs, so the constituents say this is what we need to learn more about. So they bring in the speakers and they bring in the sectionals to devote to that work. So as I shared with you earlier, there are sectionals designed to help get school boards support. Last year when we went to our advisory, we had an epiphany because a lot of the sectionals we didn't need to attend. We've already got those structures in place. And I shared this at our GT advisory last year, and they said, well, you really must take that information forward and celebrate with the school board. So that's what I'm here to do. We have a GT department in the Wausau School District. That's a celebration. You have someone who is assigned to coordinate. We have some GT learning resource teachers, and we have a part-time GT secretary. We have two district-level committees in this district that work hard to move gifted education forward. We have our GT advisory, which meets three times a year. Jane is a member of that committee. It takes an awful lot of time, energy, and effort to get our GT advisories organized. Just scheduling them is quite the task. It's usually 25 or 30 people strong. But we work really hard to make sure we bring the right voices to the table. Our GT department is in large part elementary, with the exception of our new addition, Mr. Bowler. So we rely on the voices at the middle and the high school to help guide our work. Because again, our world is in the elementary realm. We have a Gifted and Talented Handbook that took about 10 years to get to the table finished. It's published, it's on the website, and it serves as our administrative guidelines. We update it regularly. We have two school board policies in Wausau that govern one gifted education and one acceleration. We support acceleration in the Wausau School District. That is not true everywhere. We have a universal screening process in which all of our second graders take an assessment called the Terranova Inview. This is an important commitment in time and resources. Again, not all districts are there yet. They're still working to try to figure out how to afford such an assessment. This is my seventh year in Wausau, and the Terranova Inview's been in place for many, many, many years before my arrival. So we've been doing this important work for years. We continue to look to find better ways to serve and identify our underrepresented population. And we are able to do that here in Wausau by looking at our local norms, even our building norms, and we do that through our talent pool. So even if you don't formally qualify for our gifted services, we have a safety net, we like to think of it as, in which students, high-achieving students, can still have their needs met. And again, looking at the local building norms. We listen to our stakeholders. We give a parent survey two years in a row now. Our parents said we want better communication, we want more training for staff, and we need something at the middle school. While we hired a middle school GT learning resource teacher when it was really tempting to hire another elementary person because we sure could have used the help, we started a parent newsletter to give them better information, and our GT learning resource teachers created a slideshow that they presented and shared with all of our teachers as a way to honor that request, providing more information to our teachers. We listen to our teachers, trying to improve. An example would be when we wanted to grow our GT music program, we brought the elementary music teachers to the table to ask them, what do you think we need to do? How should we move forward? I'm really proud of the collaborative efforts among departments. Our GT department relies very heavily on the education department. I rely very heavily on the fine arts department the last couple of years as we've been growing our art and music program. It wasn't just a couple of years ago that was the math department that we worked so closely with. I also believe we have a great collaborative spirit with our community agencies such as the Boys and Girls Club, the Lee Aki Woods and Art Museum, and many, many businesses who support our leadership program. I want to thank you for this opportunity to share everything that I am proud of that's been happening. This work has been district-wide for the last five years, and we will be taking our strategic plan that we've been working on at our advisory level. We're going to get their blessing next month, and then we will be sharing that with you, the school board. We have worked really hard to implement positive change and growth while keeping in mind everything that's on our teachers' plates. There is so much. And really, the GT department is just one department vying for the classroom teachers' time and attention. I believe change can be sustained, but it can only happen in a district like Wausau where there's already so much support. This begins in the classroom with our teachers and our GT teachers because they're charged with this important work every day. There's a commitment here in Wausau, and when I asked the teachers and everyone in attendance at the advisory last year, what are you proud of? What should I share that you're proud of regarding gifted education in Wausau? These are some of the things they shared. Adding GT-specific services to our middle school. Continued unique and exciting ideas used to engage students. We problem-solve and make things happen for our GT kids. Our advisory sets goals and moves us forward and upward. We have supportive classroom teachers. We have an open-minded staff who constantly looks for new ways to meet students and help students. The enthusiasm to learn amongst children and adults alike. Energetic, wonderful students. Awesome GT programming for the arts. Whatever it takes attitude. The list goes on and on. When I think about the overwhelming task of moving initiatives forward in a district as large as ours, even though sometimes it can feel a little small, I take comfort in knowing that this happens one step at a time, one day at a time, and because we're such a collaborative school district, I do believe we'll continue to add to our programming and do great things.
Thank you very much, Tammy. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just have a couple because, you know, this is near and dear to my... A couple, just a couple of general statements. First of all, Tammy, I hope that you and all of your GT staff as well as the teachers know that the impacts you make on the GT kids, I would say, are just as equivalent and just as significant as perhaps the programs that Judy has for traditional, you know, right, special education. The connections you guys make are really changing these kids' perspectives, and the opportunities that are being provided to them, I would say, are just as valuable, if not more valuable, in this program as anything else that they happen to be doing, you know, within the classrooms. And I hear stories all the time from parents that it just, it's fantastic, you know, the things that we're doing in the last probably four or five years, it really seems to have been accelerating. And I know there's never enough money, there's never enough staff, but just, you know, please know that that work, it goes beyond just what you guys may see as, you know, it, they bring it home. I have personal experiences, right? They bring it home, and they're most proud of what's going on there. And secondly, the strategic plan that you talked about, I can't wait to see it, and I hope, beyond hope, that you guys are aggressive. You've heard me say that before. I hope that you're working with Bob and, you know, beating on his door saying, we need this, we need that, and all that fun stuff because we're doing great. It's nice to hear that, but I still think there's obviously so much more we can do, and I really look forward to helping you guys figure out how to get that accomplished.
Thank you. We definitely appreciate the school board's support. You make us want to work harder. I don't know anybody who can work harder than they are. I mean, really, people are, they're maxing out, and I appreciate what you're saying about the importance of these students and their needs and their education. Some of your comments are echoed from parents in the survey that we sent. I believe, I believe it has everything to do with the fact that we have the best teachers, we have the best GT teachers, who will really do whatever it takes, coupled with the best classroom teachers, because that's really where the rubber meets the road. We have to work as a team.
You know, you make a great point. The collaboration that goes on between the GT teachers and the classroom teachers, again, I saw first example, some of the stuff that was going on, it's the team with the folks out there. It made all the difference in the world to get input from the GT teacher to the classroom teacher on a math enrichment process. It was night and day for some of these kids, so it's great to see it.
And I wanted to ask, now the conference that you attend, do they still have the parent track?
They do.
Because I know I, years ago, I used to attend when my kids were in school, but that's, I mean, you can learn so much by attending that conference.
This year, the conference theme is Student Voice and Social-Emotional Learning, and there are many, many breakout sectionals to speak to that topic. It happens to be kind of the theme of our department this year. The teachers are doing a book study on that topic, and so it's always worth the attendance if you can make it. I would, I don't know, but I would venture to guess there are an equal number of parents in attendance. I remember my very first year sitting in a room, and I was far outnumbered educators to parents. So it's well-attended in both worlds.
And Tammy, my only comment was going to be, and I don't know the summer curriculum well enough to wonder this, but I'm hoping that in the future, we have many choices for our gifted children in the summer school program. And to my knowledge, we really don't. Am I missing the boat there?
Well, I think that, I think we started last year, and I can't speak very well to this, but I know there were some STEM opportunities. The difficulty was they filled up very quickly, so we ran out of space, so that's a, that's a positive thing, but I know.
I keep pointing out that there are all these grants out there for foreign language exposure, and it would be really nice if we could add that. It's, all the grants are out there to do that, and that's a way to start exposing children to languages, and we all know it should be at that early level, and it doesn't happen. So I just keep promoting that, and so hopefully in your strategic plan, you'll have some great ideas for summer school. Little pressure.
No pressure, Pam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Tammy, pass our regards on to your staff and particularly pass on the very positive comments that Pat had to make, because that's the first time I think he's said positive things. Something that's very, that he's very, very good still. And so you've gone a long way, he knows. So it's very good. Okay, next item on the agenda is Public and Student Comment for Items Appearing on the Agenda. Okay, no one has signed up. The next item is the Consent Agenda. And the Consent Agenda might include additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, decreases, contract renewals, non-renewals, leaves of absence, resignations, terminations, voluntary retirements, the minutes from the regular session of September 10th, 2018, and the special session of September 24th, 2018, payment of bills, budget status and investment report, donations to the district and school board members' salaries. I'm looking for a motion.
Someone.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is Older Recurring Business. There is no older recurring business. The item after that is New Business. We have Policy 9305 up today. This comes to us from the Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee of the Whole. And so this is on Legal Services. And Bob, is that yours?
Yep. This already was reviewed at the PRL level, and the changes that were suggested that evening are in the copy that you see.
Okay, do we have any comments or any questions? Or I ask for a motion? All right, so I'm asking for a motion to approve Policy 9305, Legal Services as Revised.
Someone.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is Board Member Attendance at NSBA, which is National School Board Association. And so I wanted to bring this one forward to discuss because we will, as part of our Board Workshop series, be talking about board professional development, but this registration is coming due now, and there's a question of getting blocked hotel rooms, so I wanted to bring this up and find out what the consensus of the board was with regard to these meetings. I've never been to one, so I don't know particularly what the value of them are. I don't know if we have members that end up involved because of these meetings on national committees or what, other than the information that's been brought back to us, what the value has been. So I'd be looking for members who have been to that to give us some input.
Well, I've been to four or five of them, and they're excellent, and the only thing that I always regret is I have no way of sharing any of the information and sharing the workshops that I've gone and the different things that have been brought to my attention. And I know last year, Pat, I mentioned about how important it was to have leaders in technology and how we need to have mentors and other people in place if we really want to move the district. And that's something we've never talked about. Another thing that they talked about last year was how to make everyone at the high school feel involved, not just the valedictorians, not just the students with the 4.0, but how you engage all of the students and make them feel that that school is a place for them. All those things, I don't have any avenue to share, but the, except for Terry Bradshaw last year, all of the speakers have been unbelievably fantastic. And it's really worthwhile, it's very intense, and you come home exhausted. But I think further down the road, if we're not going to have an avenue to share what we learn, it's not good for just one person. Jane and I, and Beth has gone before, we always go to different sessions, so we all come home with different things, but then it stops.
Right. We've had, you have shared with us before at the, right, at the professional, at the very end of the meeting, but it really isn't, doesn't allow itself for building an action agenda. And so, you know, I do have brothers about spending that kind of money that doesn't address how the board might change its operations.
But we can make it so that the board can change it up. We can build it in that we do some educating once we get back. I have a prepared statement. We are in the business of providing the citizens of the Wausau School District the finest education for their children that we can with the resources available to us. In order to accomplish the task, we have to be innovative and open to new approaches towards our stewardship of the district. One of the best ways to gain information that can help us provide the best services is best service to meet with and learn from other education professionals. I wear my glasses, so I'm in trouble. From across the state, nation. Speaking for myself, I believe that we are never done learning. We never reach the point that our knowledge is complete and that we can frequently benefit from new information. That is why I attend conferences every year to learn what other districts have done, to overcome challenges, and to bring the information back to the board so that we can continue to provide the best education possible. Just one example of bringing these best practices back to the board is illustrated by the fact that prior to my attending a conference and learning that other boards are deeply involved in negotiations with employee unions, this board had no engagement before that time, and after that, we did. I also rewrote the bullying policy and created a new bullying report form as a jumping-off point for us to get the ball moving. I was able to do this from the information I gathered at a conference on bullying that I attended, which I paid for out of my own pocket, from books I purchased and from breakout sessions I've attended during other conferences. I don't believe I've ever turned in a slip to be reimbursed for meals, and I've only recently turned in slips to be covered for mileage because Teresa told me she wouldn't let me drive unless I did. And this board has a duty to provide the best service at the lowest cost in a difficult environment. We all have a duty to do our due diligence and to stay up to date with the latest information available regarding the efficient oversight of our district. Attending conferences and sharing information is a valuable tool in accomplishing this goal. If anyone asks why I attend most conferences, my response from now on will be, why do you not take advantage of the opportunity to gain more information so you can make better decisions? I encourage all my fellow board members to seek out and gain a broader view of how we can do our job better. I hope that in the future, the entire board engages in ongoing education in our chosen field.
What would be the impact of cutting back and not doing a national conference, which seems so expensive, and doing the state conference instead?
Well, we started attending the national conference under Kathleen's strong recommendation. And you learn the state, you can learn certain things here, but at the national convention, that's where I learned about the year-round school concept, and that was nothing that had ever come up at the state convention. And we've talked about it, and we say we don't get a chance to... And we've talked about it, and we say we don't get a chance to educate on what we learn, but it comes up in other ways when we talk about different discussions, different topics, and we've attended conferences on those things, and it works its way in that way, too.
So I guess what I'm wondering is, why, why isn't it an item on the agenda after a conference to have a board member report to, is it too broad?
It actually is an item on every monthly agenda. And they kind of, and actually Jane and Teresa have started to do that, have started to make reports, but it's very hard to turn that actually into an action item. And if we're turning that, then we're asking administration to either give us a broader presentation on the same subject, or maybe to bring somebody in from CISA or somewhere else to give us a presentation on that subject. So I think, as Jane mentioned, you can get the ball rolling. And then, you know, my question in the whole thing is, well, is this the best use of the money to get that ball rolling, or might we have better ways to facilitate that? Because it is so very expensive. We've only, I think in the last two years, only sent two people at $4,000-plus dollars. If the whole board went, it would be cost prohibitive. So I, you know, so again, you know, I represent the board, whatever you guys want to do is what we're going to do, but is this the best way?
I think it's important to go to the national convention. I certainly don't need to go every year, as long as someone else on the board wanted to go, but there's so many different valuable information. I'm going to give you another example, sitting down with some teachers from, from board members around the country, we were talking about vouchers, and we were talking about special ed vouchers, and we were also talking about vouchers in general. And not until I was having a conversation with them did I realize that Florida, Arizona, and Wausau, I mean, Wisconsin, lead the nation in vouchers, and that, why is that? And then, then they also were giving me information about the trends in special ed vouchers and how Arizona has gone to a debit card. You know, there's, there's just this nationwide movement of things that you gather, and their breakout sessions are about all kinds of topics. Here in Wisconsin, we're in our state, which is very valuable, I'm not saying it's not, but if one or two people went to the national convention every year, it's really important because it's a perspective nationwide, not just here. And, you know, some boards, they do it. They do it on a rotating basis. Two people go every year, and it depends on how, how many want to go, and they just rotate through. Yeah, to send the whole board would be, it would be cost prohibitive, but to send two on a rotating basis, I'd be glad.
We'd have to rotate, which wouldn't have the interest, but.
I'm going to go back to Tricia's comment earlier, when she was talking about policies. Is there something wrong with what we have today? Is that why we're reviewing this? Is there anything wrong? If there's nothing wrong, can we just leave it as is? Is there something wrong? Is there something that maybe I haven't been informed of, or is there a reason why we're having the conversation? Are we doing, are we trying to, you know, shave the budget or something, or are we just looking at, you know, the process of who goes and who's not going, and so what are we trying to solve today by looking at this?
Well, we're bringing it up now because of the timeline. This is something we're going to talk about at the next or the workshop after that, in any case, because we need to get a handle on how we want to do our professional development. And so the question really is tonight, do we want to keep going with the way we've been doing it for, you know, the amounts of money that we're spending on this, or do we want to make that change right now? Now, we can continue to send people, and again, be likely in the $4,000 range, because we probably won't have that many people who can take time out of their work schedule to go, but if we decide to do that, within, of course, we can put something larger in place about how we're going to use that information when you all do come back. So, you know, that would certainly be an option, because we're only, you know, we're not looking for a problem to fix. It's, we're spending money, and the question is, do you want to keep spending money in this way or not? Because it's, there's no such thing as neutral when you're coming to budgeting, right? Do you get a value from it, or do you not get a value from it? And again, you know, we can go either way, but I thought it'd be a good idea to have to raise the question while we're in mid-process of figuring out how we want to operate as a board.
I think if the individuals that attend can share summary thoughts of what they learned and better educate all of us, I think it's important to do that.
Is there, do you consensus then?
Yeah, I mean, to me, the people that have gone certainly have said that there's value in it, and I know that just in listening, I don't look to them to come back and to make some big proclamation that's going to completely shape my view on something, but it certainly has caused me to think of different perspectives or different options, I guess, in the past, which is why I have no issue with the way that it's done right now. In fact, I'm appreciative that people have the time that can go and come back, quite frankly, and report out in whatever manner that is.
So we've had four, maybe five people express, or six rather, sorry, five to six expressed a positive opinion, so that sounds like that's the particular majority.
Yeah, I think, I think it's useful, I think it's more useful if Keith or somebody in his place can attend as well. And I know, I think Kathleen did that at times. I think that.
You have a professional development budget.
I think that probably makes it more useful.
Oh, I think that's definitely. Last year was the first year Kathleen didn't go.
I suspect that makes it more useful.
Yeah, that already happens through a separate budget item. Okay, well, I think we're through with that item. Committee board referrals, there are no committee board referrals. The next item is public forum or public and student comment for items not appearing on the agenda. Still zero, okay. Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. There was the Wausau Regional Meeting, and I brought up a few things tonight, our next Board Workshop will bring a few additional items that came off, and anybody else who attended that, if they have something they want to throw in from that meeting, they can certainly add that to the discussion that time or now, if you have some.
I do. I thought the presentation, when they talked about the very early childhood development, the importance of doing things and meeting the needs of kids from, for the first three years of life, and they said, well, you know, a lot of times, people don't think that is part of our public education budget, but the reality is that it sets the tone for those kids at learning in the future. And I was very impressed with that. I heard that also at the safety conference, and I really would like to see our administration take a really strong move to work with perhaps social services and some other agencies in the community, utilizing the public schools in a setting where those kinds of educational forums could be taking place for parents in the community, because I think ultimately it would really benefit everybody.
We do have the early childhood program at Jones, isn't it? Isn't that where that's located?
Jones and Fox.
And Jones and Fox.
I'm sorry.
Okay. So, Lee, would you like more information on what we're already doing to kind of figure out?
I would, because it seems to me that we've got, we've got a number of elementary schools, and if we could utilize them and do a community effort, I think we could do, I think we could do something very special in this community.
And just to piggyback on that, Lee, some of the different areas in Minneapolis and St. Paul, from birth, the day the child is born, whether they have any, any issues at all, their parents are constantly given questionnaires about how their child is developing. And I thought this was interesting, a friend of mine's grandson, who will not be a year old until January, and lives in Woodbury, he's already being visited, because when the mom filled out the questionnaire, she said he's not doing beginning consonant sounds. Now, I don't know a lot about early childhood, but that's how early they're getting involved in every child and how they're developing, and then they send a team out to interact with the child and find out if that's normal, the child is just not ready to do that. They do all these kinds of things, so when you talk about that, we need to be engaged with our hospitals, getting those parents on board immediately. I just thought that was, that was a really neat, even further than what we're doing, what they're doing.
Yeah, touch and attachment and those things are so incredibly important in those early developmental areas. And I think we can help parents be much better at it.
That's a great point. Thank you, Lee, for addressing that.
I just wanted to, I like the John, what's John's, what's John's name? The Wausau? Ashley. John Ashley made a little analogy about new shoes, and for the people that were at the dinner, he talked about, schools want to give everybody a pair of new shoes, that's equality, but equity comes in when the shoes actually fit. And I thought that that was a great thing to add to our conversation tonight about equality and equity, which leads me to the Wausau West and Wausau East football game, which is really a little borderline, but there were three things that caught my attention. Number one, Wausau East has brand-new band uniforms. I hope everybody that attended noticed that they were really pretty spiffy. I don't know who paid for them, and I'd like to thank them, but since we had quite a discussion of whether we could afford that, I thought that was great. And I counted about 73 kids out there with brand-new uniforms, so I thought that was hooray. And then, the scoreboard and all of the people who are contributing to that scoreboard payment, there wasn't a down that went unannounced at the football game that didn't equate it to somebody on the billboard. That's another Aqua Finance, first down for the lumberjack. That went on through the whole game. And so, I thought, you know, this is great, that they're certainly getting a lot of publicity for that space on the scoreboard. Lastly, the homecoming court, now, I don't go to homecomings very often, so I don't know if this is what they always do, but it was Wausau West's, Wausau West Homecoming, and the students were asked what they really like about their high school, and I can't tell you what all of the kids said, but two of the students said things that were really impressive. One, they really liked Wausau West because of Jeb Steffbauer, and they felt he was a principal that really valued their ideas, he valued every student, and he made it a warm and safe place, so they wanted to thank their principal. Did Jeb around?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. The greatest principal.
The greatest principal, they said.
And the kid's last name, Steffbauer.
And then the third, and then the, a second student that I really remembered what they said was that they really liked Wausau West because of its diversity and how it had a population, a student body population, that appreciated other people's ideas and differences. And I thought that was really great, because that's what we're talking about tonight. So, doesn't really tie into a board report, but I thought those were three really important things.
You did mention who won, didn't you?
Wausau East, and it's only fair, they, what, have they lost the last six years in a row?
Six years, yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
And they won at varsity soccer. All right. Anybody else?
Yeah. I attended the WASB Resolution Committee meeting and discovered that if we decide we want a resolution, we can get underneath the deadline, because as a sitting member of that committee, I can present one in November at our next meeting for consideration, so, which would tie into your early childhood education possibly. We are, you know, we could write a resolution that WASB support more financing or inclusion, lowering that age from three down to birth, maybe. And then, the other one, since today is Indigenous Persons Day, that was one of the resolutions to move forward, that Wausau support creating an official Indigenous Persons Day.
And so, Wausau, it does have that resolution looking forward.
Yes, it's moving forward.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Superintendent Tiltz, we're at that point in the agenda for your commentary.
Nothing to add at this time.
That's the greatest report ever.
I can do that every month, if that's true.
Sometimes. Presiding Officer Commentary, nothing new. I simply want to congratulate the high schools on having made it through their homecoming weeks and everything else that's going into this first month of education for the entire district. It's a lot, a lot, a lot of work. I'd like to ask that the board liaison report be entered into the official record, and I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Someone second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.